Hey Marcus, are you ready for the meeting?
I'm ready.
Okay, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone.
Are you ready?
Yeah, hi.
Hi Marcus. Thank you.
How are ya?
Doing well, thank you for joining us. We're about ready to start with the pledge of allegiance at 6:02 PM.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we did start at 6:02 rather than 6:00 PM. And we will go into approving the agenda, however, I should make a note that it's been brought to our attention, the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph of the February 15th meeting says, Dale Larson made a motion, that will be changed to Dave Larson made a motion.
My brother wasn't here that night.
Was that the February 1 or 15?
15. So, I don't know if anybody had any other things that they could see that were amiss or should be changed, but if not, we would need a motion to approve the minutes of the February 1st and 15th.
No, you need a motion.
The agenda.
Sorry, the agenda. Forgive me. I'll make a motion to approve the agendas presented.
One second.
Dave made the motion and Melissa seconded. Is there any discussion at this time? Hearing none. Marcus, how do you vote?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Darla?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And Linda?
Aye.
Five yes. I'm sorry, now, I've got an asterisk next to number 4, not 3, and that is the minutes. And as I said, February 15th, it says Dale Larson rather than Dave Larson, so if anybody doesn't have any other changes or any other discussion, I would need a motion to approve both February 1st and 15th minutes.
Are you asking for a motion to change the February 15th ones or just approve them with the change?
Approve them with that change, it's up to you, whoever makes the motion will deal with the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 1 and February 15, 2021 meetings with a change to the February 15th minutes to read Dave Larson instead of Dale Larson.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Melissa and seconded by Linda to approve the February 1st and 15th meeting minutes with the change to the 15th of Dave versus Dale Larson in the 4th paragraph. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Marcus, how do you vote?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Darla?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
I vote yes. It passes. And we move on to number 5, public input.
I have one thing, it deals with the FOIA, asking for information on the items scheduled for the shop.
Computer?
Computer. And I sent a list of what I was expecting, so I'm just checking on the status of that. And the website, I still don't have access to it, and we've already visited on that, so.
Thank you. I don't know what's going on. I tested the website at Custom Coils with Windows 10, Windows XP, Windows Vista, and with Windows 7, and every one of them was able to get at it. Of course, we're on Alliance, but we'll have to take a look at it and see what's going on.
Okay.
Marcus, were you able to access it?
Yeah, I can access it. Vicky, could you explain what you mean by that you're not able to access it?
The screen that comes up is the old chamber access with the aerial of the water tower.
You're Alliance, too, right?
And I am Alliance also.
I've tried it on several devices and I've seen the new one every time, so.
Oh, I neglected to say it, I even did it on this, and this is an AT&amp;T phone, so it came out, I don't know what's going on with the other situation there. Is there any other public input before I enter, I've got a number of things that people brought to me to bring to the council as discussion items, simply discussion items, and we may or may not do something with them in the future.
I just had, I just wanted to bring up the park and the reeds again, I think we should take them down, people have been complaining to me about them, that's all I'm gonna say about it.
Okay. Vicky brought up the FOIA, and that is one of the items that I have on my public input list. I have an envelope here that has quite a bit of information in it that answers to questions regarding this, but I'm assuming that because in the FOIA request it says interested parties were carbon copied, I want to make sure that everyone hears that this is the information that is regarding that computer system. It basically is not a custom-built computer system, it's just a standard clone, IBM clone, less expensive than, say for instance, a brand name IBM clone, whether that would be Dell, or HP, or Lenovo, or I guess Lenovo is technically speaking not a clone, it is an IBM, but... So there is information here for you, Vicky, we can get that to you in a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
I also have a couple of different things. When I was visiting with some people this last week, one person brought up to me, and this is exactly the way they said it, "I know what Al Sester needs to do, they need to do something about the water." And they were specifically talking about the water smell and taste. And I explained to them, you know, I haven't noticed it myself, and of course, I mean, we've got a number of places in Custom Coils that use water, and I mean, you wash your hands 25, 30 times a day, and you smell it, and it's coming out of heated water, and it's coming out of cold water, and I've not noticed it, I've taken showers, I've not noticed it, we've done laundry. Now ironically, we just had Friday, a brand-new Culligan softener system installed, and I see no, well, I mean, sure, we get better suds, but I see no difference in the water smell or the taste. I never have like the taste of water that's gone through chlorination systems, so I have a filter that we drink water, but that's just the way it is. Is this person talking about taste or smell mostly, and is it cold or hot? Well, I assume it's cold, because she specifically called out one of her children and said, "They won't drink the water at school, they won't drink the water at home, they will only drink bottled water." So I assume it's cold. Like I said, I've not noticed a smell, aside from chlorine smell that you smell in any chlorinated system.
If I may be recognized?
Yes.
At our house, I am noticing a white particulate at the joinings of the pipes of it coming in, so there is more particulate than what it was originally when we first did the house. So, and it's been over the last five years or so, but I don't notice any smell or whatever, but I do know a buildup of particulate.
I do know we have hard water, and that's probably the calcium we're seeing, I assume. You'd have to have it analyzed to determine exactly what it is, but calcium is white, and when water dries, it leaves a white film, and that sometimes is just a calcium suspension in the water.
This is, sounds kind of stupid, but has this person lived in Al Sester their whole life?
Long time.
Well, they have, okay.
Long time.
Sometimes coming from a different city.
Right, well, I'll give you that.
Water tastes different in Colorado maybe than it's gonna taste here, so.
Well, and sometimes a child is more finicky, for lack of a better word, you know, so maybe they're just saying, "Well, I saw Little Johnny or Little Jamie drinking bottled water," and they don't drink it because it smells bad, or tastes bad, or, you know.
And farm, if it's farm water from a sister, and it's gonna taste different.
Artisan well or something, yeah.
Yes. Than city water.
True.
Mayor?
Yes.
I was just gonna say, I am from, I came originally from California three years ago. I won't drink the water, and I don't, only because I don't taste the chlorine. In California, it's chlor, that's all you taste, is chlorine.
Oh, yeah.
But here, I don't, I, I mean, I drink it when I have to.
Right.
Because you gotta have water.
Yeah, it is hard water.
But it is a different taste. And I'm just saying it from a person that hasn't grown up here.
Some of it, I believe, the rural water is partially Missouri River water, is it not?
Well, Pat and I were in a water system meeting here, what, two, three years ago, they were talking about the hardness of the water, and the person there that was in charge of the system said, "Well, when we started pumping out of this aquifer, the water in there was 1,000 years old. It was just sitting there for years and years. As we start pumping out of it, then it starts filtering down through all the rocks, and the dirt, and everything else."
It's hard.
"It gets back to the aquifer, and as it does that, it dissolves things that make it hard." He said, "The lower you pump out of an aquifer, the harder the water is gonna be."
So, that's maybe a logical reason for it being as hard as it is, but... And as far as not being able to taste the chlorine, I think maybe that we've probably put just enough chlorine in it to make sure that everything bad for you is killed, however, maybe in some locations, they put enough chlorine in it to kill you almost, so.
Well, I don't even like California anymore.
Their volume of chlorine is much higher, so. The other, I've got two more things, one is the street condition, specifically, they mentioned Union Street, and it should be noted that on Union Street, and this was between 2nd and 3rd that they were talking about this, on Union Street, it is kind of rough, however, just a few days prior to that, we had multiple calls from people worried about water leaks. And really what was happening was so much of the snow was melting so fast, that it was running as if we had major water leaks all over the place. Well, we didn't, obviously, because it's not still running like that. However, what this individual said was that the conditions were bad enough that they almost got stuck with their vehicle. Now, is that possible? Sure, I suppose it's possible if they got into a real low spot next to a curb where there was, you know, not a lot of gravel, maybe more mud. However, I think that people just needed to realize that it was kind of a perfect storm for melting of snow.
Is that by you, it's south of you?
A little bit, yeah, a little bit further south.
Have you noticed?
Not by us, but it is bad down there.
Yeah, that's half a block.
So that's, that's a, one of the points that I was gonna make, is that we do need to do something, but we're obviously not going to do something, first of all, if it's still actively melting and we're still dealing with thawing of the ground, but secondly, if we're considering doing all of this extremely expensive work under that pavement. That pavement will not be laid new to make it as pristine as they want. We can, we can put a Band-Aid on it, but that's about all we can do right now. So, that was another thing. Another item that was brought to our attention during the week was specifically relating to water bills, and we had heard that the individual that was talking with us about it felt that they were being targeted because they received this large orange sign. Well, I can't remember how long ago it was, I'll say a year ago or less. The city opted to stop sending letters to people that were delinquent in their water payment, and we did that as a council, but we did that to cut down on the expense of sending out mail, and quite often, that mail was just basically ignored anyhow, so we decided to hang something on the door, and this is what we hang on the door. The one thing about it that I wanted to bring up specifically was the whole targeting, when you say targeting, to me, that means that you were singled out, and at the same time that that particular delinquent notice was put on that individual's door, I believe 26 other. Now, let me just say that again, 26 people were late on their water bills, and we weren't. The city was not, we pay our water bill on time, so for a while, we're acting as a bank, and we shouldn't be. So, I mean, we're doing what we can to keep people's water on, we could actually shut off water, but we would rather not do that, because then they would have a $50 reconnection fee, so this is probably the least evil thing that we can do, we have to somehow let them know, you know, you're delinquent, I mean, something could have slipped through the cracks, who knows? So, those are the items that I had for public input.
When you said a sign, you first described it as a big sign, but my brain is just kind of picturing like this little door hanger thing.
That's what it is.
That's exactly what it is, Marcus, I apologize.
It's a 3x7, it's just like a do not disturb sign for a hotel.
Yep.
Perfect, that's what I was picturing, but I just wanted to make sure that it's not like the size of like the screen card, like those second doors.
Right. I will, I will take a picture of this with an 8.5x11 sheet of paper next to it, so you can see a size reference, and I'll text that to you after the meeting, if that's all right?
Yep, that's perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any other public input at this time?
I was approached again on Saturday about looking at our ordinance on shelters.
Do they specify what they mean by look at?
For the future.
For the future.
Not now, nothing to do with what's happened.
I don't think we have an ordinance that specifies anything about shelters.
Well, that's what I said, we don't, so they think we should look at that.
Maybe they would like the numbers.
Yeah, they want us to look at that. Because that's what I said, well, we really, there's been nothing done wrong, and they said, "Well, I think you need to look at that."
Darla, do you know what they're particularly upset about with the house, so that when we look to that in the future, we can specifically zone around those parents, or is it just kind of like, "I don't watch houses, so stop looking around"?
Right, that's the bottom line.
Is this one person or several people?
No, this is like the fourth person I've had.
Do they know there's a vacancy in Ward 3?
And they all have property in that site.
In that, yeah. Do they know there's a vacancy in Ward 3?
I've said that.
That is a good valid point.
Yes, yes.
Okay, is there any other public input at this time? Hearing none, we're going to skip over item 6 for the time being, we are a little bit behind, it is 6:21 PM rather than 6:15, and we're gonna go on to number 7, 6:21 PM. And that will be to open the seal bids, I have two here, one from Top Coat and one from The Road Guys. It appears as if their bid is for a dollar and 65 cents per square yard, I will hand this to you. Which one? This is, I'm sorry, this is Top Coat.
What was it?
I'm sorry, it's The Road Guys, I just looked down at Top Coat.
And what was it again?
A dollar 65 per square yard. And this is Top Coat's. Each one of these show a bond as well, and the necessary dollar amount, I believe, we'll review that, but the meat of it is that the Top Coat bid came in at a dollar 90, that's $1.90 per square yard.
So it's well tied to the actual order?
I believe so. And we use The Road Guy in the last few years. How many?
So there are 12.
Three. So, I don't know if we actually had a specific square yard calculation.
It was 13,750.
Okay. Do you hear that, Marcus? What 13,750 square yards bid by both The Road Guy, The Road Guys and Top Coat. Top Coat, okay, and you got the dollar amounts?
Yeah, the dollar 90, the dollar 65.
That is correct, dollar 90 being Top Coat.
Got it.
Okay.
If my understanding, they're both paying 10%?
Is it surety bond or? I'm just going to stick them back in there, hope they're partway. So you've heard the dollar amounts, you've also heard that we use The Road Guy in the last three years, I guess I don't know what your feelings are, but we would need a motion to accept one of the two bids in order to go forward.
Are we satisfied with The Road Guy?
Yes.
I think, I think we are, I think some people out there are under the impression that when we did the chopping up of the roads, we left them in a condition that it was not good, however, those areas might not have been treated by The Road Guys afterwards, I don't know. Any opinions?
I was just pointing it out, I mean, I don't have necessarily anything either way, but it's only like a $3,500 difference, so. But if we're satisfied, then we stick up and save the $3,500.
I think I would agree with that. I don't know if anybody else has any disagreement. I would need a motion to accept one of the two bids for the price of whichever that bid came in at.
Like a motion to accept the bid from The Road Guys for a dollar 65 per square yard for chip ceilings, 2021.
Do we need the total dollar amount, or?
No, we do it based on square yards, and total come in as close as they can, it's at 13,750.
Now Darla, while your motion has not been seconded, it says subject to any special terms, can you think of any special terms, or do you want to add any special terms to your motion?
Is there a time?
It's in the contract, I believe it's either August or September.
So both of them?
Have the same.
Does that need to be in the motion, or no?
No, it's in the contract. And there may not be any special terms, I didn't know what the bids are going to come in at, if there was anything, any notes or anything that was different, so.
Didn't look to me like they added anything on site for maturity bond information.
One second.
Motion was made by Darla and seconded by Melissa to accept The Road Guys' bids for a price of a dollar 65 per square yard, subject to no other special terms. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Linda, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Darla?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
And Marcus?
Aye.
Five yes, thank you. Okay, now we will move back to item number 6.
Mr. Mayor, can we do number 12?
It is 6:30. So, our legal representative has asked us to try to get in touch with him regarding item 12, legal updates, at 6:30. At six thirty or within minutes of six thirty.
Actually, it's executive session.
Yeah. Now, that's one of the reasons why we needed to do it at a specific time because he wanted to make sure that he was in a position that he could go into executive session with us.
I'll make a motion. We enter into executive session pursuant to S D C L one dash two five dash two dash three, legal.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we go into executive session according to seat S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two dash three for legal counsel. Is there any discussion? Marcus, how do you vote?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Darla?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And Linda?
Aye.
All five, yes, and we are in executive session at six thirty-two P M. All right, everyone is back in and it is now seven oh nine P M. And we are out of executive session. If you can bear with me. Again, I'm going to say it is now seven oh nine P M and we are out of executive session. And we will take a step back on the agenda to, I believe we're at number eight, Employee Appreciation Day. March fifth.
Six, excuse me.
Painting.
We skipped over six, I'm sorry. Paint South Dakota, you're right. Got so many notes on here, I didn't even see it.
I think it could be brown.
Green would be nice. I mean, we've already seen brown for quite some time. Well, there is the nomination form paperwork here from South Dakota Housing Development Authority regarding, uh, nominating a homeowner. Got to submit this by April sixteenth. Says the nominee's home must be a single family. Nominee must own and currently reside in the home. Home must be in need of new paint to improve its appearance and value. Nominee must be physically or financially unable to paint the home on their own. I'm gonna pass this around and you guys could take a look at it.
So we're supposed to survey our own board and find somebody that would be in need?
I believe it's all volunteer. There was a young couple, the Emery, that the Emery City Council did this for many years ago, twenty years ago easily. And maybe they got their house painted for free. And it really did improve the whole area. Their house was without much paint on it at all. They were worried for the home itself. It's worth looking at. It's a lot of work to put enough people together to do the job, but.
So they have to be nominated or they can nominate themselves or?
I, I believe that we would be the nominating people and we would nominate a homeowner.
How are we supposed to know if they can afford? Or if they can afford themselves?
So one, is it one per community then?
I, I don't see more than one sheet in there.
So.
I would assume that we'd be lucky to get one.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. But you know.
Volunteer groups nominate the houses.
We did a couple of them painted, like my neighbors was painted. Was that through this?
Sounds like it.
Okay.
And the bank used to do this. Um, they didn't do it last year and maybe since it's changed ownership, they don't do it.
All right.
But, um.
I think the bank employees did the one on, uh, Union Street.
Oh, it was a church. It was, it was Nathaniel.
What?
Wasn't it Nathaniel?
That happened.
I don't know, they did Sally's.
Yeah.
But that was, I know Tim Reed was doing a lot, did a lot of that, but he was probably just a volunteer.
There was a gray house next to where the mayor used to live on I.
Okay.
Or Dakota, I mean.
Okay.
That house was done and then, um, the house on Brad Street next to the New Mount Home was done. The red house with the electricity.
Okay.
That one was also done.
So it says you have to, you have to find a group of people to do it and then the group nominates the house.
Oh.
South Dakota Housing pays for the paint and the group provides the painting tools.
So we'd have to first organize a committee that would be willing to do this.
Yep.
Okay, good news, good information. I guess, as you can see, it's just for a discussion, I don't care. If somebody wants to. Somebody has a right idea. If you've got an idea, if you think we could do this, I think we can find the people or, I mean, everybody's busy, but, you know, the last year and a half already, people are kind of interested in doing anything different rather than just sit at home and watch T V. So. Not to mention it would help somebody and help the community too. So that's my two cents worth and, uh, I don't know, but anybody else feels about it, but it's something that we would have to address by the sixteenth of April with a group of individuals. I would be willing to be one of the volunteers for that group.
I'm wondering if we didn't like the ministerial.
Maybe not a bad idea too. They, they probably have a pretty good finger on the pulse of need. Good point. Okay, any other discussion? Not, we'll move on to number eight, Employee Appreciation Day. Now we're back in line.
I, I had Pat put this on the agenda. I saw a thing on the internet that March fifth was Employee Appreciation Day and I was just wondering if maybe we should be doing something little. I guess I was thinking maybe a ten-dollar gift certificate for our full-time employees or maybe all of our employees in one of the businesses in town. You could take the ten dollars out of every department budget. See that bunch of dent and maybe you would show a little goodwill, letting them know they appreciate it a little bit.
Or you can pass my policies. Said, or you can pass my policies tonight when we get there.
We can definitely do that too. I, I think it's a good idea to, on this day.
Yes.
Show our appreciation for the employees. They have, they've gone through the same difficulties regarding COVID nineteen that we have, so.
Ten dollars to buy lunch somewhere. I think just.
Yeah, or, or even.
A gas.
Total stop, yeah, for gas, whatever, I mean.
A local place.
Yeah, that's.
State of the community.
Yep. And it could be alsester bucks that would be accepted at the golf course at, uh, I mean, we're in Alsester, I mean.
Chamber have those?
They have chamber cash. And then we have a, anytime we dispense that, we provide a list of who the chamber members are, the two things they cash at. So it could be any secarest ones, it could be for gas, it could be on the hill, um, it could be the golf course, either city bill with it.
Total stop.
Total stop.
I assume maybe the alsester bar, maybe, uh, the cafe.
Yes.
Your daily dose.
Yes.
So.
Roll quarters at the bank.
Yeah, exactly. So that would certainly be something to.
So can we act on that since it's, doesn't have a motion thing?
Um, Linda, it's this week.
Yeah, it's March fifth. For the discussion, we just have to include a motion to approve, whatever it is you want to approve.
Is all employees all right or do we limit it to full-time employees or?
So if we say.
I was just wondering, like, how would we do lifeguards and?
That's what I was just wondering.
Not sure how we would. Do we even know who they are yet?
Hmm, not a hundred percent.
So then maybe.
What part-timers do we have right now? Cash and, who else?
Cindy, it's here.
And then.
Paige is part-time.
And then Brandon, we pay out year long.
He's technically speaking seasonal though, so that would be considered part-time, right?
Dale Dergens, it might probably be a full-time during the summer.
So.
If the pool manager, is that a full-time job during the summer?
No. It's whatever, how many hours they run or sometimes they work more than forty when it's, um, uh, swimming lessons.
Cindy don't have one yet.
No.
Well, we could do anybody who was employed in twenty twenty with the city and come and get ten chamber dollars or something.
That would include those lifeguards that worked last year. I mean, that, that would be.
What, do we have five or six lifeguards?
Uh, six, I did last.
I have six or seven.
We have a couple that aren't in the area. Kendra's in Minneapolis.
Yeah, they probably wouldn't want to try that.
For ten dollars.
Do they ever go back?
Um, I haven't seen Kendra for a while, so I, I don't know. And I know she's not planning on coming back to the pool this year, so.
Well, in the interest of moving this along, I'll make a motion that we give a ten-dollar amount of, what is it called?
Chamber cash?
Chamber cash. In, for an appreciation, Employee Appreciation Day. Gift to any employee from twenty twenty.
I'll second.
Pick up at the city office, huh?
Marcus, did you hear all that discussion?
Yes, I did. I did have one quick question. Does chamber cash expire?
Uh, yes. We used to do six months on it. Um, I'd have to ask Nikki what kind of time she's putting on it now.
Okay.
Now, let's just use, I can't remember her name already.
Kendra.
Kendra as an example. I mean, she's got ten dollars chamber cash. She can give it to mom and dad. She could give it to Uncle Ed.
Yeah.
So it could still go for something. And the business would still get ten dollars, so. Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Hearing nun, Melissa, how do you vote?
Aye.
Darla?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Marcus?
Aye.
Five, yes, motion passes. Ten dollars chamber cash. Maybe we could get an accurate count of swimming pool and seasonals and everything like that and get an actual dollar amount. And so that, even it'll, even though it'll be after the fact, on the next meeting, we actually have that dollar amount, so we know where we were. Okay, we'll move on to number nine, Department Head Updates. As far as street goes.
Um, I was trying to give you some of the highlights that I know. Um, our wheel loader is, had to go down to Sioux City to get repaired. We had a leak in one of the front end housings, so it might be kind of expensive, around the five thousand mark. Uh, I haven't gotten the bill back yet, so I don't know. We also have been dealing with a frozen water line. That's why the alley is blocked off at Mindy's and down by Total Stop area. I need to talk with Dale. I talked to the plumber today. We've been trying to heat up the ground, but, uh, and we've had Haywarden come over and try to locate the line for us if it was copper, but it appears as plastic, so, um, we're not exactly sure where the line is. So, and we're dealing with fiber optics, which when the ground is frozen, Dan Waterman doesn't feel as comfortable digging just because he doesn't have the exactness that he does when the ground isn't frozen. So I'm going to talk to Dale tomorrow and see what our next game plan is going to be. The reason the alley is blocked out is number one, we're trying to heat the ground and then number two, we're, we're pulling out it from the post office with the garden hose. So again, we don't want people driving over it. So that's what we're experiencing. Hopefully we'll have, um, an answer for the people at the hall right now, but that's, that's where we are, so.
So that, that water line in that alley must be shallow enough because that, that could, I can only think of that being why is that would freeze?
I talked to, um, I talked to Dan Waterman today and Haywarden is experiencing a lot of the same problems. And the city in Haywarden is also very perplexed. Why is this happening? Uh, because they're actually seeing the frost down at a much higher rate than, than, they don't have a reason as to why they're experiencing what they're experiencing either. So, and Dan has never seen anything like this and he's been in the business a long time as well, so I don't, I don't know what happened, why it happened, but we do know that to alleviate this problem hopefully in the future, once we do dig up this line, which will be in the summer or whenever the ground is suitable, um, we are going to wrap this line with some heat tape, um, insulated as best we can. One of the reasons that we're experiencing probably the issue we are is, I think it was in twenty fifteen, we had a leak in that area. We dug it up and we put gravel back in instead of dirt, which gravel is holes or crooks to get down. So we will do that a little differently when we put it all together.
Obviously, we've already discussed the, um, Road Guys situation for the streets, but some good things shouldn't happen this summer there. I don't know of any other street information, so we'll move on to cemetery. There's quite a bit of activity right now regarding the cemetery and will be probably tomorrow. It's, it's new plots, is that correct?
We've sold new and then there's some transfers where I just have to update deeds.
So we're, we're seeing quite a bit of activity there.
Did she get my text?
Yeah, and I want to talk to you because I don't know who that is.
Okay.
And I don't know why.
She, she lives around here. She's got three plots, three plots already and her husband's buried there.
Okay.
And she's moved, she's sent me a message, I'm her messenger, so, yeah, I'll talk to her.
How, how much progress are we making to get the records computerized that, that? How, how much progress are we making to get the records computerized that, that digitalized data put in?
Um, no progress has been made during the month of February.
Has there been some before that?
No.
No progress has been made.
Correct.
Do we need to work on getting progress made?
Yes. There is a plan, potentially.
And are you speaking from experience as one of the committee members that is...
Yeah, it, it has recently been discussed with some people involved with the cemetery committee.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, we'll move on to water slash wastewater. We have just had contact, um, from, I can't remember the lady's name from Banner.
Daniel.
Tamia. And she the one that sent the letter today? Yeah, and, um, she's talking about, you know, if you remember correctly, the whole wastewater process was kind of in stages. Well, she's already talking about the 2022 work and the fact that we need to probably start developing some of that information, so... I don't know. I guess I can't remember whether she asked to give us any kind of timeline when we should get back to her. Can you?
I don't remember.
I, it must not be extremely urgent, but it's something that we need to be thinking about in the very near future, but we need to go ahead with that. I don't know what we can do, if we can do anything regarding our water. I do know that the people that we get our water from tested a lot. We tested as much as we are required to test it. I've never had a horrible test. Now, that being said, we still know it's hard water, so that could be part of it. Could be the mineral content that people are smelling. Who knows?
If, if I might add something there, if people are using one of those one demand water heaters and it's not used very much, the water in those gets really stale. And it needs to, those need to be...
Cycled.
Cycled, so that they're generally what, five or 10 gallon?
Yeah.
If that water all is sucked out of there, drained, drained out and used probably daily or every couple of days for sure, it gets a real sewery smell.
That's interesting. Well, that may be something.
But that's why I asked if it was hot or cold, so...
Yeah. Well, I don't, I don't know of any other water wastewater information. Does anybody else have any idea? If not, we'll move on to the police department update, and you can see that chief provided us the report that was printed today. Looks like sixty-nine records. I've had some conversation with chief and with Officer Skeller lately, and they, they are correct when they say that this, this may not look like a heavy workload, but just a few of these items in here are heavy enough workload in many ways, so... I think they're doing an outstanding job considering the fact that there are only two of them and, uh... It, it's amazing to me, some of the things that they come across.
I have a question about the school zone lights.
Yes, sir.
Good, good.
Boy, I don't think they were set right.
I don't need it.
Obviously not.
Seven o'clock, eight, nine, ten o'clock at night, the one over here.
And on the weekends too.
This morning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I've seen it in the mornings when it probably should be on too, but...
I think the one up by the cemetery may be right. The one by the swimming pool.
No, it's, yeah, I agree.
Is, is not right because it was on Saturday.
Yes, it was on on Saturday.
It was on at one-thirty today.
Yeah, it's been on usually when I'm out walking in the evening too.
Oh.
Yeah. It's like, it's like it's broken. Well, just like it's broken, yeah.
Exactly. We came home at ten-thirty one night from a trip to, to Watertown and, uh, it was going ten-thirty at night.
It was last night.
So, that we should touch base with the officers.
Does it line anything?
Oh, is it? Okay. Okay, then we'll move on to golf course.
Uh, the reels are sharpened and all the repairs made and they are back, so we're in the process of getting them back on the mowers. Um, with the exception of one or two other things, the repairs are complete to the mower equipment. And I have, should have finished it up today, but I didn't make a call this afternoon. We're in the process of negotiating for one, uh, updated, used golf cart. And the guy assured me that we'd be able to stay under our two thousand dollar limit, so we're waiting for the grass to grow.
So there's no trade-in when you're doing that? Oh, there is.
Yeah, we'll trade in, we trade in one of our two thousand six Yamaha and get a, a green Easy Go so it matches all the rest of them.
Sure.
They're all the rest of them.
So in your opinion, with that, we'll just use two thousand dollars. Would you say then they're giving you probably five hundred bucks for the one you're turning, trading in? So it's about a twenty-five hundred dollar item or?
Yeah, I would imagine.
That's a good...
Vintage golf cart is probably worth five or six hundred dollars.
Okay. All of them are gassed. None of them are electric.
All, all of ours are gassed, yes.
That's good. What about the cart shed discussion?
That came from me. Um, Summer Rec approached me about the buildings that we're not going to be using at the golf course. And at that time I said I had no idea, but since then I've talked to Pat and Dave. And I called them back and said, you know, we are willing, you know, to listen or whatever. They, they would like a shed up at the ballpark that they could park their mower in that sits underneath that little picnic area.
Shing, shing.
And in the past, they've kept all their ball equipment in the auditorium and they labeled it all out. Well, they don't have that now. So they looked into building a new shed, but the price of steel is really going up. So I called, well, it was Carolyn that called me. I called her back and she said, at this point, we would just like to look at it and see if it's even an option. If you would be willing to do something with one of those. I think it'd be the golf old cart shed and possibly the, or possibly the tool maintenance shed. That they would be interested in.
And what we're probably talking about is cannibalizing those to the point where either they...
She said we'd like to see if they could be moved or...
I don't know what they are, how you, how you...
Yeah, they're, they're pulled, they're pulled.
So, so when you talk about moving it, it wouldn't be like the typical move where you move the structure probably? I mean, you could. You'd cut it off as flush as you could and, and just...
I think they want to see if the option would be there is a bottom line right now.
At least they would get...
Would that be okay? They go and look at them? I guess that's her big number one question.
Well, what were we planning on doing? They were, they were going to be removed.
Well, when, when the new cart shed is done, all of the rental carts that we have now will be moved into the new cart shed. And the idea is that the, the overcrowded maintenance shed will be moved down to the, the north cart shed and that will become our maintenance shed. So then we, we would have the maintenance shed not being used, the thirty-two space...
Old cart shed.
Salt, salt cart shed wouldn't be used. And if they just, if they just want tin to put on their own place, there's a lot of really nice green tin on top of the clubhouse.
Well, that's a good point too. The clubhouse is going to come down, so...
So it's going to come down, so it would be...
I mean, I, I think we'd be foolish not to at least let the, like you say, they want to look. They, they would need to look at it first to be able to say, is this something that we really want to do?
So it's okay? I can tell them to contact?
Contact me.
You? Okay.
I'll, I'll take them up there.
They set up a time. I think she said Carlson and Carolyn are the two.
I'll give them a tour of whatever they want.
Okay, alright.
So we won't necessarily make a motion or anything, but...
They, they want to know what's there before they decide.
So I'm assuming if, probably ahead of myself, but if we do start cannibalizing the buildings, we're going to have our legal counsel come up with something to, like a waiver for people who go in and start taking...
Yeah, they would have to be probably, um, they would have to be. Are those people that are on the Summer Rec program, are they part of the volunteer list?
No.
No. They're completely different entities.
Well, yeah, that's a good point though, Melissa. We'll, we'll have to at least approach that. First, let's find out when they look at it, if they go, oh, I wouldn't put this in my cow barn, you know, so... Which they shouldn't. I mean, it, it should be suitable for what they're looking for. We'll see.
And they're on a relevant budget too, so they don't get a lot of money playing ball in the summer, so...
Okay, uh, any other discussion on the golf course you can think of? If not, then we'll move on to the library.
Now Paige is, uh, doing a used book sale right now. She's got a couple tables full of books, so if you're interested in something like that, stop over and check it out. Nine to six-thirty, used book sales. Probably a flyer, wow.
Yeah, it looks like the prices are right. Doesn't everybody have this?
I, I think so.
Yeah, anywhere from fifty cents and you can get a whole grocery bag of stuff for three bucks, so... That's kind of cool. She's got some pretty neat ideas.
Make sure you take a mask because I think the school's back in mask territory.
That's true.
Yep.
They had a...
Case.
Case, yeah. Okay, then we'll move on to, uh, I don't know of anything else for the library to do or... Uh, we'll move on to committee chairperson updates discussion. And I, after this, Melissa had had some discussion with me. I believe Linda, you were even involved in this, that we, we just kind of had talked about committees and how we can better utilize the people on the committees and, uh, possibly help us in doing some of the legwork for what we will be discussing after a bit regarding performance evaluations, et cetera. But, I don't know, do you want to add your input? Uh, for all practical purposes, this is...
Well, I mean, my only thought on it was that I think a lot of, a lot of stuff that we discuss in the meetings could be getting done between committees first and save some time in the meetings.
True.
I agree.
The other thing I guess I'm going to bring up, and I know this may be a touchy subject, but we don't have an HR department. We, we have people that are, are acting as HR people. And I know that this was brought up before and I know that it was basically shot down before, however, um, we need, I think we need to do a little bit better job of dealing with the human resources that we have. And that involves probably having, uh, the committee and specifically the committee chairperson a little more actively involved in some of the employee review process, et cetera. I guess I am under the impression when we hear our auditors say that we really should have approximately five people in this office full-time instead of two. Well, it's obviously not going to happen, but if we had a part-time HR entity, I don't care whether they're from Omaha. I believe that we talked about a, a place out of Omaha that is heck of a lot more local or close to us than, than California. But my point is, if we, if we could get some synergy going between the department heads and employees and the department heads and the finance office and everything, then, or excuse me, I, I said department heads, excuse me. I meant committee chairpersons and actually the whole committees. I think it might help us, um, do a lot of things right the first time and cut down some of the time in meetings. I don't, I, did you have something that you wanted to add that I haven't maybe?
Uh, I think it can wait until eleven.
Oh, okay, because it is kind of, I mean, that's, that's the whole thing. It's kind of all in there in human resources too, so... Okay, well then I will call letter G, uh, completed discussion unless anybody else has any input. And hearing done, we will move on to number ten, and that is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh four. Everybody's got a copy of that? It's the revised municipal ordinance for the city of Alcestor, chapter ten dot zero three. It amends that chapter. Give you a moment to, to view it. You've got this too, Marcus?
Yes, I do.
And you have, have you had an opportunity to review it and?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
Does anyone remember what the designation for the, this building is or this, or any building in that section?
For zoning, I mean?
Yeah.
It's the plan, it's, uh, Old School Center.
Plan development?
We created a plan about the district and the name of the district is Old School Center.
Does this need to have a section here for plan development?
I'm not sure if the, uh, codified law actually referenced plan development districts.
Okay.
During their modification.
So this basically comes because some go to change the state law?
That is correct.
Okay.
They modify their groups in July of twenty twenty.
So, you've seen the ordinance. We would need a motion to approve the second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve second reading ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero four. An ordinance amending chapter ten point zero three of the twenty eighteen revised municipal ordinances of the city of Alcestor.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Melissa and seconded by Linda. And you can read that motion name in ten A. Is there any other discussion? Hearing done. Marcus, how do you vote?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Darla?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Five yes, thank you. Passed. We'll move on to number eleven, longevity performance base bonus discussion.
So, long story short, this all kind of snowballed, um, wanting to do performance-based bonuses. We need a performance review to make, to measure what you're going to base that on. Um, one of the things that was listed in the performance review sheet was complying or how the employee is doing matching up with their job description. So then I started looking at the job description. So then I started looking at the job descriptions, and some were passed in twenty fourteen, then there's some other ones that were edited in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, but they were never actually officially adopted by the council. I don't really know what's in effect, but that's something that's going to have to get cleared up somewhere along the way is figuring out what those job descriptions are. And if that's going to require rewriting them and then actually the council actually formally adopting them. Obviously, that's not something we can do tonight because that's a work in progress. Another thing that we talked about February first was, I handed out some templates, asked you guys to review them, and then come back with your questions, comments, concerns, ideas for changing those documents. Like I said, if we're not ready to adopt them tonight, at least have a discussion tonight on what we're thinking or what we like, what we don't like.
Well, in the documentation that I see, like you said, some of these say two thousand nineteen, there's an eighteen there.
Well, I'll give you the history of these performance, or the job descriptions. When I first started in fourteen, we didn't have job descriptions. So I wrote job descriptions. I met with each of the employees. I said, what do you do? What does your day include? And so then I generated the job descriptions. I presented them to the council, and the council voted on them and approved them in fourteen, or fifteen, in twenty fifteen. Then I asked the council if we could do performance reviews. And at that time, the council was not interested in sitting and having a one-on-one with the employee, even if it was just the full-time employees. I mean, I can understand our seasonal employees are only there, you know, fifteen weeks maybe, maybe not even that much. But I thought the full-time employees would enjoy just having some feedback with certain council members.
I don't think joy is maybe relevant now.
Maybe not.
Appreciate, I don't know.
But, anyway, so at the time when these were generated in fourteen, I had met with the employees. I said, okay, what would be your goals for your future year? And so those were those goals that came about. And then when the council was interested in reviewing them or meeting with the employee. So the only thing that really changed from some of the earlier years to the later years is that there was goals, personal goals that employees had set up. And obviously, duties have changed, so I do think the job descriptions would probably need to be again updated. And maybe if you are going to get actively involved with committee, that would be something that a committee would do is meet with the employee and see how their job descriptions have changed.
I guess my biggest concern with the job descriptions, I'm not sure why the mayor and the city council have job descriptions. I'm not sure if that's the right way to go about it. I mean, I'm okay with us having some sort of structure, but I don't know if we necessarily need to dump them, job descriptions. Personal opinion, I guess you guys can disagree with me if you want to. But this kind of, like I said, it all snowballed, and I talked to the mayor about this last week about, we've talked about HR services in the past, and now we're kind of right back to where we started, where if we had that service, we wouldn't be here having this conversation tonight, at least not this in-depth because they would have helped us navigate the groundwork for all this stuff. And then we would just plug in numbers and specifics. As you can see, there's a lot of job descriptions here. I'm, there's some of the language in there that I questioned. I mean, I suppose we could go through and redo all of them. I suppose if we had an HR service, that's what they're going to do anyway. It's just a matter of who wants to take the time to do it and who thinks they're qualified to do it. I'm okay with employees individually being a part of the process, but I think ultimately that decision needs to come down with council, what we think employees should be responsible for. Like I said, I realize this is a lot to go over tonight. I don't think we necessarily need to knock out that portion of it tonight to move on with the rest of it. It's more just to keep it in the back of your mind, look over it, think over it. I guess if it's going to require a committee meeting, maybe that's the best way to go, to just have a committee do something about it, I'm not sure, because it's going to be a bear.
Well, multiple committees can be involved in this because, I'm sorry. Because there are specific sections here. I mean, the golf course versus the, I don't care, streets or whatever. So, I mean, it doesn't have to be one great big bite for just one committee or this council. It can be individual committees to deal with their own committee information and individuals involved, and then go from there. But we've said the acronym HR a number of times, and I really honestly think that we owe it to ourselves to, again, do this right once. Just do it right and just make it done. So why would we not at least consider, I don't remember how much it was going to cost to have the one from California involved.
I don't remember.
But we've, there are a number of different places that do this kind of thing. And it wouldn't have to be something that is called a full-time job. But I can tell you that if we're supposed to have five people in here full-time, according to our auditors, we should at least have somebody that's part-time, that can look into this, put the verbiage in the correct jargon, use the jargon of the correct HR person, and get it right. So, again, that's my plea, but it's really all together. It's all part of the whole department, excuse me, I keep saying department, committee work and dealing with employees, human resources.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Ah, yes, go ahead.
Isn't there a course out there for HR that a person could take? I think I remember hearing that somebody had taken a course in HR when they were on a cleaning service.
I'm sure there are many different ways of learning it. But again, how much time do we want to expend? We could, if we could hire somebody, rather than have somebody that's already on our staff, go through training, have to get up to speed, hire somebody for a short period of time, and they fix some of the little holes in the dike, and then some of these issues will be resolved. I'm not saying they're going to be Big Brother watching over everybody, you know, for the next twenty-five years. Help us get our feet under us and get everything pretty much level, and then go from there.
So I'm assuming that was pointed at me, yes?
Well, I had read somewhere that you had taken an HR course.
You read somewhere that I've taken an HR course?
Yeah.
What did you read?
LinkedIn.
LinkedIn?
Uh huh.
Okay, it's true, I did, but an eight-hour course for HR is nothing compared to a four-year degree.
I wasn't insinuating that it was a degree, it's just training. The municipal league, the municipal league allows for training if you have an employee that's so moved that get a current employee to take a course.
And again, those are offered once a year, right? It's offered once a year, it's a day?
It's not even, well, yeah, it's a day, but it's breakout sessions and it's very isolated topics.
It does not compare to what we're talking about with either a service or an actual HR professional who is actually employed by the city, specifically tailored and trained to focus on us all the time, all of our needs. Not just a once a year, we're going to send you to a training to learn about, like you said, a few specific things that doesn't encompass everything that you're going to deal with throughout the year.
That being said, once that groundwork is laid, I can see where there could be some value in having a couple of different individuals have some of that training. I mean, whether it would be committee members, committee chairpeople, two finance office employees. I don't care. The sewer and waste plotter management person, somebody that maybe has some of this training, that has the ability to, you know, they're looking at some of the documentation that they deal with as a result of their review, and they say, you know, there's something kind of wrong here. And at least it might... Linda, do you know anything about the Haywarden City organization? Do they have somebody that does some HR stuff?
I don't think they do, not that I've ever heard.
Their city manager and I...
They do have a city manager, but I don't know if he's HR, is he?
I don't know.
And he's fairly new.
When I talked to him the other day, it was pretty, he sounded like an HR person to me, but now, again...
I mean, when I've dealt with him, he wasn't with HR, it was other things that I've dealt with him. Otherwise, I don't deal much with him.
Is this Mr. DeBryde?
No, he's, um...
Tre- treasurer?
No, he's the, I don't know, economic development. No, I can't think of the, it's a young kid, younger guy.
Yeah.
Who's Al? Is he the public works guy?
No, not Al Mays, no.
All right, well, anyway, the, but, sorry.
But, but didn't Melissa do a whole bunch of this work one other time when we voted it down, not to have an HR?
I don't even think we voted.
We never voted?
We never agreed to vote.
It never got in the budget. We didn't find place for it in the budget. That's my red selection.
So I, I think what we've been doing is we've been limping along, sending Pat or one, I don't know. Did you, you didn't go one, it was just Pat, right? You never went to the HR training, my career?
Um, no, I haven't gone to any training recently, no.
Okay, so we've just been limping along, hoping that that once-a-year class is going to get us through on the day-to-day, and it doesn't. And when you take those classes, whether it's through the municipal league or if you go through a private company that offers these services, these one-day classes, the first thing they tell you is, this is not equivalent to an HR degree. This is just to give, it's kind of the opposite of what Pat was saying, where they talk about specifics. They talk about the general. They give you the general idea of how to limp through on your, with your small business, and then they warn you, find somebody who has an HR degree, because that's the best way to go. Obviously, we've already acknowledged that we probably cannot afford a full-time employee forty, fifty thousand dollars a year. But if we contract that service out for a fraction of that, quarter of that, I think it's going to pay dividends. As opposed to constantly having to rehash these same issues over and over.
Marcus, did it sound like you were going to have some input? Yeah, have some input there?
Yeah, I couldn't want to speak for a while, but I just never want to interrupt. It's, this is an interesting attempt at trying to get to speech, I thought, okay. I just, I just want to say to the, to the idea of having somebody go through training or even just having one of our current employees kind of hit this type of education. I guess I'm currently of the mindset, even if one of my employees went and got a four-year degree in HR, I don't want them to be our HR person unless that's the job that they're switching to. Because I think one of the important things that the mayor mentioned is that we need more people, not less, doing more tasks. And so if we just had somebody else tap on the HR job, that doesn't solve that problem. And so I think contracting it out helps us to get the groundwork, and then hopefully, crossing my fingers and knocking on wood, like the council itself can then use that groundwork and move forward in a productive and efficient manner. But like training somebody who currently works to do another task is like asking somebody who's already overworked to work one more task. But we know that they're not going to be able to really do well. So I think the training thing, to me, is just kind of a moot point going forward.
Good, good input. I, I think you're saying we don't want them to work harder, we want them to work smarter. It's, it's a kind of a difficult thing to even think about adding more costs. We've got costs that are coming at us from every direction, but at the same time, we really do need to do things to the best of our ability, and that may require spending money in little different areas.
Well, I, I think the fact that Melissa previously talked me about this, and it never really didn't go to mind because it just didn't fit in the budget. I mean, that's kind of an alarming thing to me, because in the end, so we recognize that this is a problem. We recognize that we should do something, but it's just not currently in the budget. And then we failed to find it in the budget ever since then. And I guess this, this conversation unfortunately is happening later than our previous budget because we've already passed that. But, I mean, it is, it is alarming to me that we let ourselves find ourselves in the exact same position repeatedly. And so it, it just makes me feel like, you know, that we just have to find this somewhere, we just have to do it. Because if we just keep talking about how we're going to find it in the future, we just constantly push it off.
Good point.
So Marcus and I had an extensive conversation today where we do our thing, where we like to argue with each other lovingly. And we were debating on what's the best way to go forward. Like, do we want to push this entire thing off until we can get the whole thing fixed? Or not fixed, but dealt with? Or do we want to continue on with discussing three point two and three point three and getting the performance stuff in place, and then try to sort out the HR issues? So I guess that's the question I'm posing to the council tonight is, are you at all interested in, I mean, I think regardless of whether we want to do performance-based bonuses or longevity bonuses, I think that the performance review provision needs to go into place. It should have been happening, you said it hasn't happened in seven, eight years, as long as you've been here. Wasn't happening before that, I don't know. It has been in our policy manual, at least since the year two thousand, that we do performance reviews annually, and they've never been done. So regardless of your feelings on bonuses, I think that we bare minimum need to have it in the policy that says we do annual performance reviews on the employee's anniversary date.
So regarding that, when you originally gave us that information last meeting, or maybe it was a meeting before last, it's this green form that she had, the performance review criteria, grading, if you will, and in fact, they use the term grade, a number grade. And then, like you said, sections three-two and three-three in our manual. I agree that those, those two items really need to be addressed, and need to be addressed in a timely manner. That timely manner could be tonight, or it could be two weeks from tonight, but it has to be dealt with soon. And we need to get the ball rolling. Along the same lines, I think that next meeting, we should have a line item that is a frank, open discussion about this HR possibility and a vote that will be also dealt with at that time. Melissa, you had alluded the other day when we were just talking about a location in Omaha. I, I don't necessarily want dollar amounts or anything like that, but can we, can we maybe get that information disseminated to the, to the council before the next? before the next meeting, obviously, so that we can all kind of wrap our heads around that?
Yeah, and I haven't looked at any particular company too in-depth. I just, a quick browse, found one in Omaha. I don't know how they operate, if they're Omaha-only, if they do nationwide remote. I, I don't know.
Somebody does this, especially in, I mean, in the last twenty or twelve months, it's, it's bound to have happened even more frequently. And there may be startup companies doing the same exact thing that we're talking about, because you can't necessarily have a person on site that's going to sit down and talk to each person, but they might do it over Zoom or whatever.
And I just noticed that I did not give you guys a copy of what I was proposing to revise for policy 2.6 for performance review, but, and I can send that to you between now and the meeting.
Did you, the performance review sheet that we have here, did you manufacture that?
No, it's a template from, that I found online for public use. And I tweaked it using the templates that Pat gave me and information from, well, not all of the job descriptions, because I didn't have them all, but the ones that I have.
I had Pat hand out some suggestions. Now, in one way, if it'll be possible to add some things to it. It might have to be re-formatted, and I can take care of doing some of that. If it, do you have this as a PDF or a?
It's Excel.
Excel, okay.
So who would do the performance?
That's what I forgot to give you. So it's, I just basically took 2.6, fixed or tweaked it, I guess, and it would be, the council committees would do the performance reviews with the full-time employees, using whatever sheet we approve. And schedule for reviews is with a new employee after six months. And then after that, honor about the employee's anniversary date.
And that's 2.6, so?
Yeah, and I...
I mean, you can get that out to us as well.
Yeah, I, I don't know why I didn't send it with the rest of it.
I was just, my work does this. And they're very simple, four, four or five things.
Yeah.
The head person, the director does, the office people, the teachers, and, and the head teacher on each side for that. Then that person is responsible for the people under them. And that's, and they're very short, sweet.
That's the way it is at Custom Coils, too.
I think we don't have, it doesn't need to be long.
No, no, and actually, if you look at this green sheet, it looks a lot more formidable than it is. I mean, it's, it's really like...
But when I go into mine, I can honestly tell you, my boss says, and she's an HR person, "I'll never give anybody excellent, because no one's perfect."
Right.
So, you know, it's part of it's on there, it's like, she says it. I'm, I will not give an excellent to anybody, because no one's perfect. So, I mean, it's just, it's a lot of personal opinions. So that's why I think we can't go into a real long...
Yeah, and that, so, I think you sent me two templates. One was two or three pages, one was like five or six pages, and I was like, I don't think anybody... If it's too daunting, nobody's going to do it. And I think that's why it hasn't happened. A, because, you know, there's no policy, there's no procedure, there's no form. But C is time, and I think if, if it's a daunting task, if it's a six-page document, nobody's going to do it.
No one would do it.
And I think a lot of these topics are broadly covered and what's already in there. If you want to get more specific, I suppose we can, I don't think it's necessary.
And some of them might not apply, so notices are non-applicable. So technically speaking, even though it's two pages worth of checkmarks or numbers, grades, for lack of a better word, maybe a third of it, or a quarter of it, or five items are not even considered, so.
Well, I think, I think the thing is like, often times when I ever had to do a performance review, was like my bosses, these things already filled out. Like, the majority of it, they've already been like, I thought through and I've checked how I felt about all of these things. Please take a second look at it, is there anything you disagree with? Or that you feel troubled by, like, my idea on... And then they, they do the, the open, they do like goals, like, how do you feel like you've accomplished goals? And like, what goals do you want to set the next time? They do those in the meeting. Like, these, these meetings have never taken me more than, well, I shouldn't say anything because I'm the talker, so these meetings take me much longer than they ever take the normal person. But the normal person only took like a minute, and then I walked out like an army. But like, I, I think like this, I think this task becomes incredibly manageable for like a committee to just kind of sit down, do it at their own leisure. Each committee, I think, only has so many employees. And so they're just like, okay, after your entire year, I just figure out a time I'm going to do that. Well, I mean, we're all busy, but I think in a year, I can figure out how many, like, how much time I've got to do, to employee evals. And then you, you just sit down, you do that, you compile them all together, if you wanted to like average your scores and stuff. And then when you're talking about like goals and stuff, that's how I think committees, and then update the job descriptions. I think job descriptions should become a thing that we also update, or like, we don't have to update them, obviously, if nothing changes, but like, that's something that like, we can naturally do when we're having a discussion with, I, like, I don't know, with water and sewer, and like, he's like, oh yeah, that this thing about my job is totally different now because of the new system. Then we can be like, oh sure, that's important, we should update that, like. We, I think these, all of these things help self-reinforce both themselves and the next thing we have to do. And so I think like, we should just really pass all of it now. And then we can talk about the human resources next time. Because I think that's a far more intense conversation that we're going to have to have.
We could, we could even do that, that is a, a possibility. There is a section here on motion to approve blank. Before we did that, though, I would like a printed copy of 2.6 in everybody's hands. Could we print that?
And I think it also needs to be in a resolution format, which this one is not. I, I almost put it in one in case this was something that wanted to get passed tonight, and then I, I don't have this 2.6, so.
Yeah, I, I just thought of it before I got here, that I never sent it out, and I don't know why I didn't, but I didn't, so sorry about that, that was my fault.
Well, so then we may, we may be forced to wait two weeks. But two weeks is a lot better than saying, well, we'll do it next year, so.
I mean, a lot of the stuff in the suggestions, I think, is either already in there, or, I mean, the first one, I don't know how they got the job in the first place if they don't have the skills or knowledge that they need.
What, what are you talking about?
Like the job description?
I have suggestions for change, so does the employee have skills and knowledge needed for the position? I would sure hope so, otherwise I don't know why they're working here. I don't know if I'm free to do it. Communications are...
Well, some, sometimes you don't find the ideal employee. You find the person that is available.
That you can train.
Something to keep in mind with these, though, like, this is not meant as something to fire someone. Like, that's not what we're doing here.
Right, I agree.
If you need to have a disciplinary proceeding for something because somebody doesn't know how to do their job, that's a completely separate issue. This is just an annual basic review, judging everybody on the same level ground, once a year. Routinely, regardless of whether they're doing well or poorly, it's just routine, we do it every year. If you need to have something separate because somebody's not doing their job, this is not going to solve your problem. That's not what this is for.
But if different people are giving different reviews, and they review them at a different level, and you've got, you get a score of one, you get nothing. No bonus. And maybe a different person might give them a different rating. How do you, you know, you're going to have one group do this, and one group do this, and...
It's just, I'm just, if we're going to, this is only if we're going to do the bonuses. If we're not going to do bonuses, then I guess you don't really need a grading system. I mean, I suppose it would be helpful for that employee to know overall how they're doing.
I'm just, you know, thinking, you know, somebody might not get very high, and somebody might...
Like my boss, she never gave a grade.
Right, yeah.
But I might.
Yes, yeah, yes.
And it's, I mean, in my opinion, it's pretty low stakes, I mean, a hundred bucks a year.
I mean, three, most people you would think would get a three, but you don't know.
Well, I agree with Dave that I, I know you're saying, how do you get the job if, if you don't have the skills? I mean, I, I can come in here and talk a good game, and I could say, you know, I've driven a truck before. The only thing is, when I stopped driving a truck, I had to replace the transmission and the engine because I didn't do a very good job driving a truck, so.
I, I'm just hoping in that situation, you wouldn't be waiting until their six-month review to be like, okay, you're terrible, and now you're fired. Like, I'm hoping that would happen pretty damn quickly, as opposed to waiting for the performance review. You don't have to wait for a performance review to tell someone they're not doing their job.
I've been sitting in this chair long enough to know that we sat on an employee because they were the person that we had, and we didn't know if we could find anybody better. We sat on them for at least a year.
Yes, I recall that.
But I guess, in that same, in that same vein, though, during the performance review, not that I'm trying to disagree with Melissa, because I fully agree, like, this isn't why we necessarily trust your person, but during the performance review, how do you kind of see that, like, oh wait, maybe like I was not being done a good job, but then when I sat down and I worked through it, they're kind of a unsatisfactory employee? And then that might start a conversation amongst the committee, and that might go to the council, and they're all like, oh wait, hey, why are we sitting on this employee who doesn't deserve to be hired? Or is it qualified, or X, Y, Z? Like, I'm not saying that like the performance review becomes the moment that we're like, you're fired. But it does kind of become a moment where we have self-reflection and say like, is this the best person for this job? Am I willing to continue to employ him? Because I don't know if we're going to have another good one, or if anyone will... I think all the good things come out of the performance review, realistically. For the council, anyway, and not necessarily for the employee.
And it can be good for the employee. Even that individual that's maybe somewhat substandard in, in a number of areas, that individual with the proper direction, maybe they're, they don't even realize that they're substandard. Maybe they do, but maybe if they were given the direction as a result of going through this green sheet, and they see, wow, you know, I never thought about it, but you're right, I'm not really too good at that. I wonder if I can fix that, so. I don't know what you want to do tonight, but I do know it is now 8:20. We've been here for two hours and 20 minutes.
Well, Pat thought we needed to have it in a resolution form.
Indeed, that is how we have done our other modifications under personal policy manuals.
These things here, this section 2.6, 3.2, and 3.3?
So we're not going to act on that?
I don't think we can.
And that would be...
I agree.
So then we go on to...
So then the question is, job description slash performance review discussion and motion to approve or disapprove performance review. Dave gave us some, some additions. I, I say, there's nothing wrong with adding at all, and again, if it's non-applicable, or if you feel, you're, you're on committee X, you're on committee X, and you're on committee X, the two of you feel that it is non-applicable, and one does, you have this discussion in the committee, and then you say, well, I see what you're saying. Maybe it isn't applicable, or maybe that one person can convince the other two that it is, so.
Can, can I get those additions emailed to me?
Oh, yeah, all right.
So are we talking about getting, getting the three members of the committee together to do the employees and that, supervised by that committee?
Once a year, on their, on the, on the full-time employee's anniversary date. So there's seven employees, so seven days of the year.
Or close in there, not necessarily on that day, I hope.
Right, but it's only, I mean, you're only going to do it seven times.
Flexible, but then, okay.
And if you can't do it on...
I don't even know what, I, I'm on the library committee, I'm on the golf committee, I'm on the community senate committee, I don't even know what other committees I'm on.
See, that, that's another thing that we need to do.
Well, that's going to change in April, isn't it?
Well, some of it's going to change, it's obviously, some of it's going to change, but...
Do we have anybody that is, needs to be reviewed before then? Because we're not going to be able to get everybody in, the one-year anniversary, you're saying. One-year anniversary, is there anybody that comes up? February, March, or April?
Lonnie is April.
Who? Oh, okay.
And it's not, it's just a, it's just a recommend, I mean, that is, it's on or around.
For this first year, we could say June 1st will be the first round.
So we're going to do everybody then?
Everybody just gets done somewhere around June 1st, June 1st through June 30th. Everybody gets done, and then we go on their anniversary date from there. We can do it however we want, but we've just got to get a plan and do it.
Okay, then let's just do it.
You could ask Marcus to be...
Marcus, did you get the email?
Yes, I did.
Sweet.
Also, I, I do just want to know, like, I know, hopefully going forward, it, it could potentially be up to three committee members. But that's not necessarily, I mean, it's not necessarily required that it has to be, the full committee has to do it. The, the committee responsible has to make sure that they're doing them. But maybe tell like me to, like, right now, if any committee of three that, they're a majority of the council, therefore it'd be an, like, it'd be an official meeting.
True.
So we have to provide notice, and we have to do all these things. And so I think it's just, it's, I think it's important that each one of our committees kind of take a dear lead in governing. And whether that implies a whole committee, or whether it's just like the chair and one of the other committee members get together and they say, this is what we said. I mean, we don't have to do, I think, a little more as council members, because I think we've been pushing it on to other people a little too much, and now everybody's overwhelmed and things aren't getting done. So that's some of my sense.
Okay, what do you want to do tonight?
I would like to just give final drafts to everybody, email them out individually, and email to everybody with what I'm proposing and at the next meeting. Change if we need to, vote on it, fail to fail, and...
And we make sure that these back...
And I guess it's up to you guys to have guns. I don't, I don't know, I don't know what else to do.
Are you going to add these things in there, Melissa, that Dave?
Some of them are already in there, like...
Some of them are in there already.
Safety and, safety and integrity, like, those, all of them are already in there.
Okay.
Well, and again...
Group work, I think that's already in there, works well in a group setting.
Providing a, a modified document, or everybody reviewing Dave's document. That's the first I've seen of Dave's document.
Yeah.
Yeah, I brought it tonight.
So, so when you look at his document, in conjunction with the green Excel spreadsheet, you can make a good call, and you can say, well, it's in there. No, that's not really in there, it's kind of, whatever. And then we provide that feedback, and we make this document up so that 15th we meet and we deal with this.
Pat, do you have this Excel document?
You, you all have it.
Did you send it to me, too?
No.
Okay.
What version of Excel are you using?
One on my computer.
How old is your computer?
Not mine, this is cool, so I don't know.
Oh, it's relatively new, then, okay.
I doubt it.
If anybody can't open it, let me know, and I'll don't be gone.
Yeah, we can, we can change the version.
Can we take these?
Not mine, I don't know.
You, you put the binders...
Yeah, I, I got the binders for you guys, so...
Oh, so we can take them, what?
You can see them with, and then Marcus... Then Marcus... Then, Marcus. I, I didn't make you a binder.
Yeah, you can't, can't email a binder, but pretend like you got a binder.
I got it in, I think electronic form, right?
You do it.
I have more to it.
Right, and we can make sure that you're aware of exactly what documents we're talking about so that, we'll, we'll do that over the next day or two, that you know which documents we're talking about, and those are the ones that are binders, and then you can provide your input as well.
Sounds like going up.
Okay, is there any more discussion regarding the longevity of performance-based bonus discussion and job description, performance review? Hearing none, we will move on to number thirteen because, um, during the legal executive session, it was determined that there is no other legal issue to come before us, so. Item thirteen.
So the things that happened this month in our office is, um, we did meet with Corinne Main and we met with Ferguson, Ferguson is an alternative company for radio reads. I'm hoping to get our committee together yet this week so we can discuss, because we did get some pricing and some updated information, so I'm hoping we can discuss and maybe make a decision to present to the full council. I know this is on there coming up, but, um, we will not be having an election for 2021. We had two petitions turned in, one for mayor, one for Ward One. I, I do have someone that is interested in serving on Ward Two. I will put that on the March fifteenth agenda for council and every office. We wanted to put a call out to all of our lifeguards, and we do have advertising out for lifeguards, and a pool manager, and we also hunt some signage up around town and up at the school. We did have kind of a cool thing happen. We did have the Canton people that we had last year call us and want to work at our pool again this year. Reason being, and it does kind of sound like an oxymoron, but the Canton Pool had a fire in the underground, and, um, so even though I believe their bill passed to build a new pool, their pool is not going to be open, so those two gals that had called us and want to work at our pool again, so we're very excited to have them back. I did have Jeff Nahawa come to the office today, and just in conversation, talking about different things, he did mention that with the number of people that they have for the ambulance crew, they need some chairs, and one that I was discussing, now that we're kind of not the place for the pancake feed and the different suppers and everything, and I have that whole room full of chairs, um, I'm gonna put it on the agenda. He would like fifteen chairs, and I would just like us to probably surplus them and let them take fifteen holding chairs, but, yeah, I'll put that on the agenda for next meeting. We stoned out golf letters, and we're starting to get our golf memberships coming in. We actually had people call us before the letters even went out, so people are getting excited for the golf season. And the latest thing I'm working on right now is my annual report, which my goal is to have it before you on August, or April first.
Thank you. That is the updates and some of this other information. We would have to move on to thirteen A, a motion to approve the February warrants.
Make a motion to approve February warrants.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Melissa and seconded by Darla to approve the February warrants. Marcus, I assume since you did not deal with any warrants, you will recuse yourself?
No, I'll, oh.
Okay. In that case, is there any discussion regarding the warrants? Hearing none, Linda, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Marcus?
Aye.
Darla?
Aye.
And Melissa?
Aye.
Five yes, warrants can be vague. Twenty-twenty-one seasonal slash part-time workers, um, we don't actually have a list, do we?
Yeah.
Yeah, you do.
You do.
Your payroll, Christine.
Oh, of course.
You have part-time?
Oh, I get that, yeah. I expect that to be.
Now, I will, um, tell you, with respect to the swimming pool, um, we, we do know that Kendra is not coming back, so we won't actually be hiring her as well as Jackie.
I am not positive on Kendra, she was gonna talk to her mother about it, but I am almost one hundred percent positive that Jackie and Lizzie are not coming back.
Okay.
And Abby only as needed.
Okay, so that is Elizabeth Holloway and Jackie Holloway and Abby Wall. So Abby will just be an as-needed, but the other two will not be. So when it comes to the pool, what we're really voting on is the wage for if they're a first-year lifeguard or a second-year guard, if they're a first-year WSI or second-year WSI.
Regarding Cindy Peoples, I know that she is a part-time custodian and being an alderman, how, um, you know, regarding the whole wage situation?
An alderman can make five thousand dollars as employee representative.
Okay, so that's, as long as we don't breach that five thousand dollar mark, we're good.
Correct.
The last column in your spreadsheet, Pat, is that a three percent?
Yes.
And that's what we budgeted?
Yes. And at this point, we don't have, um, a pool manager yet. Our ad is for a pool manager, so we may have a couple of people that might want to co-manage like they did last year. So when we officially hire those people, then we will, you know, set the appropriate wage based on their local experience, but.
By everything being equal, I mean, if a person had the same skill set, had the same experience, the name might change, but the wage would probably be at least, at least the same as last year for somebody brand new, maybe, or, so.
We just know that, uh, like, when this weather gets nice, our golf people may come back, and so it would be good to have these in place before our golf employees start. Obviously, the pool won't start till May, but.
And state mandated, uh, minimum wages?
Nine eighty, nine sixty-five.
Nine sixty-five, so the people that are at nine fifty, well, they would, they would go up to nine sixty-nine or nine seventy-nine, so that wouldn't be an issue. Okay. I'll make a motion that we hire the part-time and seasonal employees at the rate in the far right-hand column, the three percent, uh, pay increase over what they would have gotten in 2020.
Are we, we're hiring them, or we're?
Well.
What?
Approve, excuse me, approve the wages, motion to approve the wages of 2021 seasonal and part-time workers at the three percent rate.
You did have one thing, you said, what was the minimum wage?
I think it is, um.
It's one percent, the summer reading thing says nine dollars and fifty-eight cents, is that okay then?
On, 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 is it over here?
Yeah, it says nine fifty-eight for the summer reading.
It said nine sixty in the column right before that.
Yes, it does, so maybe it's supposed to be nine sixty-eight, maybe?
I just thought you knew what that is for sure.
So I just have.
Ask the question.
Uh, if you look at the green sheet for the, um, part-time, it's the one that says library, summer reading program, all the way over on the right-hand, two columns. Uh, column number one says nine dollars and sixty cents, the other one says nine dollars and fifty-eight cents, and we're assuming that the minimum wage is mandated at nine... First, we've just heard sixty-five, um, but we're not a hundred percent sure, we want to verify that.
Why, I just Googled South Dakota's minimum wage, it says the minimum wage in South Dakota will increase from nine thirty an hour to nine forty-five an hour effective January first, 2021.
Nine forty-five, so then.
But that's just, that's just a Google search, so take it with grace, all.
Even then, that person got a paid decrease.
Yeah, that, so.
Yeah.
So was it supposed to be nine eighty-eight?
Well, and the summer reading thing is gonna be a little bit of a situation anyway, um, because, uh, we didn't have a summer reading person last year, and the person that, um, is interested in, and Paige is excited about working with is Hayden. And, and she was summer reading two years ago, and so I don't know how you feel about if she should make the same wage for reading, for the library that she does at the pool.
I think she should.
It would make our life a little easier if she could just have the same wage for all positions instead of cutting her two checks or creating a salary for the library side.
Who is that again?
Hayden Meyer.
So that's nine seventy-nine, then.
But you'd have to go with her lifeguard, wait, her stuff aside.
Yeah, that's right, from nine seventy-nine for the lifeguard.
Yep.
But we don't know if that's gonna be her, for sure?
She is gonna do summer reading, yes.
So do we need to change the nine fifty-eight to nine seventy-nine?
That would be my suggestion, if that'd be acceptable for you.
Okay, that's fine.
And nine forty-five is correct, yes.
Okay.
Did you get that, Marcus?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, there is a motion on the floor, but it's not been seconded. Uh, I believe that the motion, though, included the erroneous numbers nine sixty and nine fifty-eight.
It should have been nine seventy-nine.
We can just let it die, can't we?
Yeah.
You can ask for a second, and nobody can second it, we can start over?
Yeah, we can let it die. Motion died for a lack of second. So, I would need a motion to approve the wages of the 2021 seasonal slash part-time workers.
I'll make a motion to approve the wages of the 2021 seasonal part-time workers.
And tell me about the summer.
Do I need to, or is that just going to be published, or?
And when we get to that stage, you guys will officially hire.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Melissa and seconded by Linda regarding approval of wages of the 2021 seasonal slash part-time workers. Is there any other discussion?
And we're talking about, to be clear, we're talking about the far-right-hand column.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Melissa, how do you vote?
Aye.
Darla?
Aye.
Marcus?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And Linda?
Aye.
Five vote yes. Uh, let's see. We got the Board of Equalization meeting that will happen at six P M. Monday, March fifteenth. Uh, there's an appeal deadline of Monday, or, excuse me, March eleventh for any of those, um, items that we would have to deal with as a Board of Equalization. If you remember sitting here last year, we sat down as the Board of Equalization, had the meeting, ended that meeting, and basically started the meeting as the city council.
And this year, um, I will be emailing out to you the book with all of the properties on it, and it's searchable, it's a searchable PDF, so you could search on the people in your ward by their last name. Um, I did not ask for a printed copy this year, so I will email that out to you.
Oh. I, I apologize. I jumped over letter C, alternate garbage collection route, it's just information effective March first, 2021, to May seventeenth, 2021.
That's tonight.
I believe that's basically exactly the same as last year.
Correct.
Okay. And we'll have that in the paper?
It already was.
Thought so. Okay. Then, we move to the virtual district meeting on March eighteenth at five thirty P M. It's a Zoom meeting. Uh, attendance deadline is three days from today, and you need to let the finance office know if you are going to attend that. Okay, then we get into reminders and updates. There's a vacation gonna happen here in the next days for our finance officer.
Yes, I'm gonna not be in the office Friday. I'll be back on the fifteenth.
Okay. Do you like?
Is, excuse me, is, will there be someone else here to answer the phone while one could take a slush break and whatever, break?
Probably not, they will go to, uh, voice phone.
Okay. Daylight savings time is going to be March fourteenth. We'll spring ahead that day, and election day is a moot point. Uh, do we have an update on the Alsester Community Building?
They have most of the walls up for the kitchen, dining, and bar clubhouse area. They'll be putting up rafters according to what the guy said, maybe toward the end of this week. The walls for the event center portion of it are, I think, are there, but not, they haven't been putting them up yet, so, uh, Mr. Daniels thought that there would be a crew here either this week or next week with some sightings in on the golf cart building. And Darla and I were up at Canton checking out some kitchen equipment at Block Twenty Sales, and we've made arrangements to purchase a couple pieces of equipment from that establishment. They haven't been delivered yet.
There's a leak out in front of that thing, hopefully that'll all disappear soon for them. Thanks, Steve. Any, any updates to the volunteer roster for the workers' compensation?
Um, not that I am.
Nobody else can think of any? Then, do we need an executive session? Item sixteen.
I was gonna do one, but I think I'm just gonna try to handle it over the phone first and come back to you guys next meeting. It's getting late, and I'm.
Okay.
Let's be exact.
Well, Melissa just said she was gonna have an, uh, executive session, but she's going to try to, uh, handle some of it over the phone and come back at the next meeting, and we'll discuss it further.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. In that case, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Melissa and seconded by Darla to adjourn the city council. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Linda, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Marcus?
Aye.
Darla?
Aye.
And Melissa?
Aye.
Five?
Aye.
And at eight forty-seven P M. To adjourn, thank you, call.